Magadi kwa kumadana askana wa niku na opani. Saka zokamu chikamu chenye mchonje mchonje mchonje. Shnotenda chikamu chenye mchonje kutanga chema kusenta bata shakana. Ndakuku mbi ratisa tata ngai. Yonka atisro mnamatu. Shlokunyaku mnamatu ati ukuwa mwe. Nga nito tooda kutenda tipo mnamatu wakanaka shakata isomaskata anu. Eh, tisa tinda tanga ndakutenda cheni yonka wa ripani. Wadi poma mkanaye uku tindimire. Tito reo chaya uku ndakutendukua sumuzi mwa ziri. Mchonje wakanaka no kutiwa no chaya uku ndodotu muzize tichiripo sakatla kukundu muzema.
Nini ndinozi garot mashonani ka. Nuka monomashonale in central province. Chibata bina shamba will share with committee in the public service level in social welfare. Magadi kwa mashonale in central. Magadi mbe tira wa ripuno. Ndoku kwa si sae majitza.
Nda kukutenda cheni sakavandi fawa chikarucha uku tinasi ndinenda kachi bati. Njukuta ora pano ndakukua se mo se nchitima magadi koo. Tine njukuta ora nje twa onarebo ata mcheyi. Nuka kuma tebelele. Titi amemembwa of parliament constituency not counted by plawaid. Sakandindenda kabata shatavi ngapano. Kiti zotya ora nemi. Public hearing PVO. Sakatsanda tanga ndakutwajusa. My members of parliament that now pano. Tijati was into ajusa tijanga kuva. Uki yonka rekurayi.
Magadi mashonale in central. Nini chonse ne ta ongana eh. Nuka kuma shitsi.
Magadi magadi.
Tiri poma kari.
Nini ndinozi kila pache manazga. Nini ndinozi kila iske osikue. Magadi rabele. Nini ndinozi seneta semu shafuta mashinko province. Salubonani. Magadi magadi eh nyu. Onikuka androsita. Member of parliament from kopa south constituency. Nuka kumitleni skupwe.
Thank you very much.
Magadi rabele. Nini ndekwata wata dumberi. Help him terms of contingency. Toten.
Minjani magadi. Akamira pano ano ndichoro stoli. MP nukuti lete south constituency mashinko province.
Nume la. Nuno ndilekai. Magadi magadi. Nini ndikexta malinganiso. Nuno miririra wa anoka rafuno ndikushumba south. Pano chenge tamtumboa wa mkabi. Eh, kuru mashonale in west mashitza.
Magadi koo magadi koo. Mashonale in central eh oye. Eh, nini ndinozi may vivi mse mukani no papaneksi doka mwe wa. Tiri MP we matimai we PR. Sakamati mai mukani manjuwa na mugo faraso. Magadi kiko.
Tiri poma magadi.
Isa nuno ndi ana shiri. Tiri seneta ano miririra. Wa kare mara. Mika yose zimbabu. Kumusha titi vaku mitlen province. Magadi eh nyu magadi in central.
Tiri poma magadi in bari.
Seneta eh we mashonale in east. Tiri kuu eh kuku mitje cheni. Sakadi magadi koo. Saka rato mbe pa senyo kai matara. Ah, MP ah mashinko ime kota. Tshi karata kari uku mitje epa in central. Seni pa isha olo. Tshi karata kari eh uku mitje. Eh, ipo mitje sa pitisi.
Magadi magadi.
Nini ndinozi mbo kuma. Lu kuma chenye nenguza kobe. Eh, karata miriramana mbo in seni. Nuka karata mitje eh.
Magadi rabele. Tito tiri muka juba. Tiri seneta we arare. Tiri muku mitje eh.
Ayuwa. Tino tenda. Tine wamwe darele nu riparlament. Masafu ati kupampa na. Shlokunyaku basumu keboa oye. Sakaa. Nda kukundira tichutenda eh. Shata unga napano chese chata ma onarebo. Ava rukno kumbere nemi kavamo house. Asa house yesi ine mabuzi ayi. Nusa kamutindu wakanati kwe du kwa mtenda wa titu oda oda. Sakadotu njukuru cha tichuda chese chibati nemo ya wamari. Kuta tichunchetu cha ndodotiti tichumbeti tichute shakana. Komitja muru kona yaka pa kwa mtari katu maronde. Asri pani. Imwe iru matebelele. Sakaa tisa tafana namtemo. Tijakundira onarebo edwa ripani. Wativerengere ma close. Jiti bati sirano kutiwa mwe biri wakari verenga oma sate wa riverenga. Kuti munu pano sumuka chitaura. Ana kati kona kurepensa close. Uye je ati zora ambe tichika na mata ora pointi mmo otzoko ora pointi. Sakadla kukundira onarebo. Kuti mpo twerengera oma close.
Bati pani. Omakuru kochira zata tanga. Bati pani. Eh, indasumuzi ba basare kwerenga. Sakandakwerenga. Randan ndiverenge tiri. Nunozi private voluntary organization amendment bill. Number HB two yat twenty twenty four. Yaka gazetwa. Andrengopi yamiya zaji. The private voluntary organizations amendment bill. Was published in the gazette. On the first of march twenty twenty four. Objectives of the bill are to comply. With the financial action task force. In order to meeting FATF. Recommendations made to Zimbabwe. Further, the bill is meant. To streamline administrative procedures. For private volunteer organizations to allow for their efficient regulation and registration. The bill aims to ensure that. Private volunteer organizations do not undertake political lobbying. As well as involved. In the financing of the terrorist and man laundering activities. Eh, ngenuguma nyirakuenda kuma. Andrengensi a jambe pani. Kuti munu this background here view. FATF is an intergovernmental organization. Founded in nineteen eighty nine. On the initiative of the G seven countries. Its main objective is to develop policies. To combat man laundering and Zimbabwe is a member. Each member country is assessed periodically for compliance. With the policies and legislation on man laundering and financing. Nandamwe. Each member country. Is assessed periodically for compliance with the policies and legislation on man laundering. And financing of terrorism. Countries are assessed on two major criteria. Which are technical compliance and effectiveness. Technical compliance is concerned with deficiencies related. To the country's anti-man laundering and financing of terrorism legislation. While effectiveness is concerned with deficiencies which highlight practical implementation challenges. This bill seeks to comply with recommendations under technical compliance. Raised under Zimbabwe's mutual evaluation report. As a result of these deficiencies Zimbabwe was placed. Under a monitoring program in October twenty eighteen by FATF. In order to ensure the country aligns its laws on private volunteer organization. Further, this was to ensure that. Non-profit organizations are not misused by terrorist organizations whether. Is a way for such terrorist organizations to pose as legitimate entities. Or to exploit legitimate entities as conjugal for terrorist financing among other things. Eh, sakacha vupaima closes in summer. Close two. Eh, this clause amends the existing section two. Which houses the interpretations of words and phrases used in the principle act. The clause provides for the inclusion of the definition of funds or other assets. Which is very wide ranging to include all financial assets and funds or other assets of every kind. The clause also seeks to amend the definition of private volunteer organization. To ensure it covers all relevant organizations that fall under this law. And the regulation of the board. The definitions now include. Any legal person, legal arrangement, body or association. Corporate or unincorporated or any institution. In the principle act it involved. Anybody or association of persons, corporate or unincorporated or any institution. The clause further amends section two. With the insertion of new subsections relating to designations. That the minister may make in terms of high-risk private volunteer organizations. By regulating certain sectors or types of private volunteer organizations. That he or she may consider to be high-risk sectors. Or types in order to allow for closer monitoring. And more stringent regulation of such sectors or types as well as making provisions. Provision for trust. Clause three. Seeks to formally establish the office of the register of private volunteer organizations. As a start to offices in the ministry responsible for social welfare. The object of this establishment is to ensure. The office of the registrar is able to perform its functions more efficiently. By enabling it through the public service commission to employ dedicated staff. To assist the registrar. Clause four. This clause repeals the existing section of the principle act. Requiring the registration of private volunteer organizations and replaces it. With a more comprehensive provision that brings within the scope of registration. Certain entities previously excluded from registration and excluding. From registration of certain other entities. The new section six will also specifically exempt from registration charitable entities. Operating in Zimbabwe pursuant to bilateral and multilateral agreements. That the government enters with other states. In terms of which entities belonging to or connected with such states. Are tasked to provide aid and assistance within our country. Such entities should not be required to register as PVOS. Because the government is agreed in advance to the scope and conditions of their operation within our country. Clause five. This clause amends section nine on the procedure for PVO registration. To take account of the fact that the PVO body is now abolished. And the registrar alone evaluates applications for registration of PVOS. Clause six. This clause inserts a new section in the principle act setting for the circumstances. Under which a registered PVO must apply for the amendment of its original particulars or registration of registration. In particular where there has been a material change to those particulars. In some cases of material change involving a substantial. I'm sure about this in. A material change involving a substantial change in its objects. Or of its proprietary structure. For instance where the PVO merges with or is taken over by another PVO or other entity. PVO may be required by the registrar to re-register. Clause seven. This clause makes new provisions for appeals against the registrar's decisions. Under the principle act setting for the grounds on which the minister may set aside or substitute. The registrar's decisions on appeal. Clause eight. The clause inserts a new part and section governing the potential and ethical principles. By which all PVOS are expected to conduct themselves in Zimbabwe. The breach of some of these principles are declared to be civil defaults. For which the offending PVO may become liable to pay a civil penalty. Clause nine. This clause repeals and substitutes section twenty one of the existing act. To make provision for the suspension of an executive committee of a private volunteer organization. By the minister where there is maladministration. And the power of the minister to make an application to the court for trustees for the organization. To be able to continue operation as investigations are being carried out. This clause also makes provision for a new section twenty two. Which is directly related to the requirements that Zimbabwe must comply with. Under commendations, under commendation eight of the FATF. Clause ten. This clause criminalizes the abuse of charitable giving for political purposes. Clause eleven makes additions to the areas that the minister may make regulations under the act. Clause twelve. Eh, will insert a schedule in the act that provides for the civil penalty regime. Contemplated in the new section twenty two A. Clause thirteen. This clause and the first schedule will effect certain minor and consequential amendments. To the PVO, to the PVO act. Including the removal of references to the abolished PVO body. Private volunteer organizations amendment. Clothes is fourteen fifteen sixteen seventeen nineteen twenty twenty one and twenty three. These clauses amending the money laundering and proceeds of crime act. Chapter nine point two four. And the criminal matters mutual assistance act chapter nine point zero six. Will implement FATF's recommendations to combat proliferation and financing. Of particular note is the insertion in chapter nine two four of a new offense. Eh, as is in clause sixteen. Of financing or partaking in the proliferation or misuse of weapons of mass destruction. Covering a wide spectrum of activities connected with illegal sourcing of materials. And accessing of finance to build, export and deploy weapons of mass destruction. In particular nuclear, chemical and biological weapons. Clause twenty two. This clause and the second schedule will affect certain minor and consequential amendments. To the man laundering and proceeds of crime act. Chapter nine two four, number four of twenty eighteen.
Sakapanu tati chese tama onarebo tama house. Asa house yetu ine mtemo. Semu onarebo members taki kutanga urimekeza. Njukutwakukundira mono mouse. Tipemu mone mwe ataure. Shaylinga. Kuzo sadi tali funwa yakinga kuzo taurapa usopepyo. Ativi anu taurama xoko anu kude ra mwe. Mono wesata sumuka chitaura arpa tresakuno. Ujesu esu shatataura suku kechwa ne dare ra muru kona ratungwa ipampele pe. Sakamu na katora funwa yake. Ati. Mpuu kana kutataure shakada i funwa yake. Sakanduka kutititange tinema organization auya. Doa atataanga tivapemuka na uwa tauri. Kana vataura uwa submita shawena zo. Kuna chewe du kuno. Sakapwe du kana muru ma firi ma parlamenti timudani. Mono akapuda mne shatata nderani. Anu kwanza uku zaewa unagabo. Asiso shatitshike pa vunu chesi truana. Sakurango kukundira sheseti zutene mwe wamari. Tutsu chetu tibu ya shakata se shakana. Nda kukundira kutipindura. Tibu de ne chokwa dicha kinu prison tacha kua muri. Asu chakanaka. Sakadla kukutenda cheni kundi pankana uku. Sakaa. Ime jemtemo atina opano kana mu na taurapoyi. Ati wambere ma oko. Ati wambere ma oko. Uye je tino tenderwa kutsana mu na nen point of order. Ano sunza oko otiche point of order. Otaurapoyi oda yani yake. Sakado shataku kukundira pano jomtemo ye. Uye je mono tino tenderwa tine sixty languages. Sakamu na no tenderwa kutaura nerurimi ruano kwanza neruano tukisiza. Kana uchi kona kutura chishona prison tane chishona. Tindebele uko tenderwa chivenda uko tenderwa. Sakaa. Ne tine. Amayedee atina yepano. Ati interpreter understand language. Lo chera muru kona rukoero rukumcheto. Dore neke titi interpreter. Sakaa. Tisa tijapi namda rene kundu kona kunamai wa kasunza oko. Muru kuto tanga eh. Right, tooda kukutenda eh. Icho kati asina kwa enguva. Nusa tati kana pane close mono asna kunzukisiza. Yo tsa namuwa ne chishona. Nautitika zokora shetikishona. Nemu wa tiso ipati. Sakanduka kukundira kana pane close mono asna kunzukisiza. Tokundira yotauru ne shona that close. Nautitika zokora anguva kune wa no apakuri. Wanda kwa fampi kuchaka chena. Sakachi kuru chatavi ngai sukunzo ma views eh nyu. Noku tima verengera. Uye maka vere ngai. Nekutwase shoma ya kuno tso timitse maka chase maka vere. Sakaa. Ntichatora tu ma point of order kana ruwa mta kutama sunza rama oko. Chukurumiza upinda mu na ora du eh. Tijapa emine mchete ndogu. Nda kukutenda eh. Biura tavi ngapana paraka gazetwa. Muswa wani. Match. Sakaa imi ma uya pano mru tso zvati njakata se. Kuchaka gazetwa. Sakata sanga titi tio remguva. Nekutitru kuzva shumpyo. Nanda fungo tingati tjo tangeya kupinda sakama tauru antichaita tichatora kubi vi. Mono kanajisumka no tauras tarake. Tinemska na omucha ona uyu arku ya pana pa. Arku fampa anajunu tiana tjerukuro kuda shese shone kuchi tauru. Sakacha kutanga kutaura sitaraku. Sakamu na wesamda kutaura kusumza oko. Sitarako ne kau no. Sakamu na mta kutaura anu sunza oko. Sakani chachanga kutivi riku ru tige ku. Ntichati mkomawa doa chachanga. Totti djenda totti mai totti papa totti papa totti mskana. Toba po tso zya futi pakati tya kumche. Do ma ituatichaita sakancha tanga ne mumkobo.
Uh, thank you, honorable. My name is Faraimek. Eh, ndirimu yutari anuka ra monombandura. Monomchipaze. Nini ndirugu supporta view iri. Eh, kuti ma NGOs kana ma organizations. Anone kwa achitwa involved in politics or political activism. Ano fandla kubanwa mku shanda. Why nji daru kana vasi funga kukambeni rama parties. Let them join party A or party B. Not ku ya alajita se why. Iwo very my friend. Thank you very much.
Nda kukutenda eh totera mama.
Namso rohi. Nini ndiruitwa invite onloro from Yawa what fifteen kuliura. Nini andisku supporta view. Persepa clause three rukutora nyehbu akoma simba. Nara registrar minister. Simba rangarimu board. Shasno reva nisho kuti if minister kakaita corruption. Pa mu nuwani board rikasa rikasa vanesimba. Minister anyone can be corrupt. But kana reboard let's say nine five. Avaswe ita semu mind the corruption. Sakaa if one person actually decide to chimchuku chiwombi. Anu kwanza kuyita corruption. And the corruption you no nakakuoneka. Danipai tavan three four corruption achunukumiza because pana muwa nubudanechi. Danu kutichite chimchamsi ya.
Noted. Ndi noti pamsoroi onarebo. Nini ndikutaura ndakamirida.
Inindri kutawura, ndakamirida, church organization. Eh, first, ndukuda kukomenda on, ndekwa Reverend Kuasiwa. Ndakamirida ma churches. Eh, muno. Eh, akutora, ndakatasana ne, section two. Ya mata ora, yakanangana ne, definition of PVO. The church and its service arms should be included as part of the aid agencies that are excluded from the definition of a PVO. Why? The church is a religious body that does not operate as a civic society, as a civic society organization. And its mandate is to service its membership and communities that are in need. The church also has its own disciplinary and accountability mechanisms for the lead, for its leadership and congregants, which is in compliance with the laws of the country. It is proposed that the PVO states that the churches in their assets arms are not mandated to be registered as PVOs, but still comply with registration as church bodies. Thank you.
Noted.
Eh, Pam Soroy, I'm a church guy. No thoda kwa, I'm a, I'm a church guy, I'm a, PVOs, actually why, kana masidi organization. Uh, ndiskusa pota PVO, ne kuda kuskonzero, shakatuwa ndi. Asintia kusaya samaray. Chinchekutaga, again, tange ne point of order. Mata ora, ime mchiti, tamashire menguwa. But ime, da de deyre, eserikumbi ero. Di ma representative, ero di ma nono takuwea. Tatanga, well over ten minutes after school. Saka, da ifunga kutipamwe, chawa no apolo. Ba, pa, ba tudi gara, sa, kwa biwa. Tapura ipa. So, inina ndiskusa pota PVO, ne kuskonzero shakuti, rinuitase, rinenechina ngwa, chekutzipa ma PVOs. In an environment, ya gara, irukuto ne, shanda, if you ask ma representatives, machine, e ma, e ma PVOs, kana masidi organization. Kutoshanda already in this environment. Kukutoneza. Saka kana PVO ra, pa, saka kuti, razo ita mtemo wa kushanda. Shanda kwa ma PVOs, majindi, kutatora ambasamto si. Ne kutirukupa simba ragawandi, saka government. Yet ma PVOs, anne pasa raka kura, ne kuti, a change yet zevano, ne government. Paneshi, no thoda kuitwa, shinda wa zid development, kana je code zero devano. Na ongana ta kuti government, doa, aku kontrola kuti the same people. Wa no fana kua change, da kuti kuna maishu, zakata, kata, no thoda kuitwa. Rukona se kuti tato uraya, basa re ma PVOs. Saka ina ndiskusa pota PVO on that base, eh, ne kuti no risk, risk space, shakananya, armo tata ma PVOs, kushanda, eh, ne shunga shkonzero, zacho, shukutawa, shabunzi. Pane manilondari, ine chichi, shukusimpisa PVO, ndino naonge, shisna wait, starek pabuti. Inezma ches, chichi ka shunijozo. Asi, shirukuiti ga even in government. Saka, kutitiba tanyanya kuwa, ndra simba kuti ngatibotanga ita minsa ma uyoo. Tisinga one, the same effort, on the part of mismanagement, kana, misendri, e ma fans, kuma government, badminton. It is meo zere. Saka ina ndiskusa pota PVO, on the basis of some of this. Again, the period, if I'm going to go, I'll go.
Thoda kuputendai. Lokundra wa, lokumwa organization, kana ma veren, katukumbira kusapu, zeku. Na voa kutsedu.
Pam Soroy, uh, inindri no thoda kusitwas. Kuta ora, ndakamirida nyehu code zero, ndirigweita, no na ne je code zero devano. Uh, nyayangwe, ndino daktora ne jayo. Nde epama objectives, EPVO bill, kuya kata ita naru, kutipanuro, ndo ya tawo. Kutijoni, pane danger. Ne kuti ma organization, ano go na kufando, nyehu terrorism. Wezze kuti, thoda kutsiregulate ma organization. Ma one rantino jiita, ne kuderenga, okuandino ita mtemo segueita. Thoda kuti komis, itzogere pasi, no ongororo nyayoyo kuti. Iyo fatish, na March twenty twenty-two. Yakavaya zobisa Zimbabwe, mugray list. Krak zakuti, atisisi na danger, iyo yo, ye terrorism. Kana kuti, chakaputa, matanga chitasokuti, thono go na kuati, ne dambo diskora kadaro. Then, thoda banda attribute that development to already existing laws. Tita garati nemtemo, yakaita semani laundering act. Nemtemo, ino prevenda terrorism. Saka ininindri no thoda kutsama submissions, angutadita shanti samtemo, ya gara, ya ga iripo. Dan kutitoda kui samtemo mnyoani. No kuti iomtemo mnyoani uyoo. Urukutafuti kuvawazoti, wangalaka, garavaka, registerwa kudara. Sematrist, wangala, garage shanda, se common law universities. Ne va garavato kupivo act, irukuto shanda isiji. Wo onga ni, zwa weita chunu chimechete. Ijozo, shino konzeresa kuti. Palene inonzi, tine geta kuita sokuta, charimekeds constitution yenu. Ino tijo, pane freedom of association and expression. Cause kana ta kufosakeza, muno wesee, kuno associate akupivo. Thoda kuti shiro ongororo inijozo. Chepen, zisiran, thoda kuta ora, ndakanangana ne ma clause, akatuwa ndi. And no go na kuzo isha, inin, are in form of written submissions. Kutipani ma clause, asnakujek. Kufana no tikanatikanzi, within thirty days, no thoda tibefor, patagambetawa mayeri, PVO. Pangapastori, na time, timeframe. Ne kuti vanu, no fana kuregesta, shaitase. Ika shino pane thirty days. But timeframe, irukupiwale ma organization. But register we ma PVO. Asukupoa, omkuwa, kutikanandawi, anika register PVO yangu. Nichamira shakatini, ndakamirida mindu. Yo kuti ndawa PVO ere, kana kutichukumbiro shangwa, china kutambiwa. Saka mtemo uyoo. Dozi, otfana ma no funwa, ayo, uh, vanu, kuramba kureguletwa. Ayo, kureguletwa, kwa kanaka, but kuno danemtemo. Unenge wa kasungwa, uri wata tait. We kuti kana pai tama, ano go na kuzomba, tama temo iyo yo. Aso mu abuse, because pana shino shisiri clear, that enda.
Ma, shita enyu, sachi garo. Ininistara angundi no nzi, memory chaka odza, ndino garam, muno mbindura, kutipindura pa. Uh, semu zimai. Ano anzu sangana, ne matambutiwe, kwenye, ne manurwa, raku chipataro. Ndri kuti, nini kutzinga, ma CBOs, ne ma NGOs. Shirukuezera, matambutiwe, shikari, kuma zimai. Nchita, sada, yote, sekti, emu, emu nomisimba we. Tukayenda kutipataro. Nega kutisina michonga. Ifa shi tutasa, otimadimai, majindi, baru orani, ma sevika, okensa, ne shiruere, shakasiyana, siyana. Saka, NGO sector, kokode, ma CBOs. Doa, wa no kawanda, wa no itama fundraising. Ano ito, tiveni mari, mumu, mu community made. Tutasa shikari, gorinotu, tara, nishenyere drought. Afuna kunaya mpuu ra, wa norakura, ma warimunzara. Ma organization, diwa, ondo, wa no shikari. Wa no, wa no, kwanza kuti afuti fundraising. Ino kwanza kubatsira ma zimai, ne va na, vaska na mu, mu narounda. Saka, ndri kuti, tika, tuku pasa this bill. This is going to affect the young women in marginalized communities, the sick and the need. Thank you so much.
Ma, shita, uh, inin no nzi, ne, shirukiripa. Diri mo zimai, we muno mbindura. Uh, inin noti, andiskusa pota this private voluntary organization bill. Ne nyayekutichekutanga, pane pata ora, nyehukunzi, this bill, ruk, arisku daku, arisku dama organization, ano are involved into politics. Which means, the operation that we do as community-based organizations and NGOs, ino shanda more in the community. So, the more that you say we should separate politics kuma CBOs and CSOs. This means that we are not going to hold them accountable, ma politicians, our community. We are not going to hold the, the government accountable. There are some issues, our community, that are involved in politics. So, we cannot separate politics from the development of the country. So, inini, I don't support this PVO bill. Thank you.
Kamalami, Thomas Indewe. Oe Watse Veljin. Go onapa, epindura self constituency. Eh, mina, eh, nyasegela leli pili. Eh, nganga, yoku, eh, ngazisigwami kankago, eh, isi, isi shona. Niza, ngilobe, mklomedyami, nyasii, ngisi, enza kubala ngukusheshi. Eh, nitemi na inkangela, ngowe charity fund. Ngalo van city, indeed, there is overwhelming evidence on abuse of charity funds. Making reference to, we cause, ZTP, directors who resigned amid misappropriation scandal in two thousand and eight and twenty thirteen respectively. Opposition activist, Promis Mukunan, was implicated in misuse of donor funds. On four July twenty eighteen, the then acting US Embassy's Public Relations Officer, John Taylor, reported to the USA Office of the Inspector, General of the Abuse of Donor Funds by Zimright. Election, Election Resource Center, ERC, and Councillor Services Unit, CSU. In the interest of supporting highest standards in ethical conduct, maintain trust and integrity, there is need to monitor use of such funds. Ngasa footi, inkangela, ne terrorism, nga pala, ogman, mati. With PVO bill, we are simply building resilience against the threat of terrorism. Terrorism is real. Hence, the need to flush out and license the money transmiters. Laws against terrorism exist. But you cannot fight terrorism from one front, hence, PVO raises the antenna to deal with threat. Ngasa pala, nganfu, ngasensitima. Inkangela, eh, eh, community assistance aid. The PVO does not prohibit NGOs activities. But however, protects citizens from politically inclined indoctrination. NGOs have a tendency to deviate from declared mandate. They are diverting eh, from humanitarian assistance and focusing on advocacy. Lopping with political politicians. Ngasa pala, ngalofu, ngatima, inkangela, eh, logo, abangati, government interference, ngasimana no. Zimbabwe, like any other country, is a sovereign state which must safeguard its territory against internal or external aggression. A monitoring mechanism on every external activity is a constitutional provision recognized under international law. The PVO bill is necessary because from experience, NGOs have been diverting from their declared mandate. For instance, we cause has been sponsoring politically eh, activities in, in, in Pendura, Appin. Iti, they sponsored CCC eh, candidates for what, five and eight, that is Chipo, Musonsa, and Farisa Imoyo respectively. They are the current councillors for the Afosaid ward. There is no undue interference from the government as the expected law is meant to protect Zimbabweans citizens, including agri NGOs. It actually protecting the NGOs from themselves as they can be used by organizations or countries with nefarious agendas. In Libya, there is chaos now because of unregulated NGOs which funded and fought civil war. The same with the nineteen ninety-four Rwandan genocide, which was funded and fought by Oxfam. A British-based NGO, a million, a million who to lose their lives due to the work of the NGOs. Ngasa mbya inkangela, na ama, olo kaba ngati, ama humanitarian, humanitarian work? Eh, work, ngasasti, no. The PVO bill does not restrict or inhibit activities of non-state actors. But however, terminate NGOs from meddling in political affairs of our country. In reference to the closure of an international humanitarian organization, the action was taken after the organization staffed MPC, MCT campaign locals, Chanza, and distributed serries and grain. Eh, ngasa mbya, footi, inkangela ma human rights, ngati, Zimbabwe has enough legal.
Sebu, a point of order. Thothesati, thina vali bom, wati o point.
Nyabonga.
Ma, tia, kisnachayi. Uye muna, anindaka ni ora ngasabu.
Atina kutatisnachayi. Tati chiti tikaisa mu, muchishona. Saka nduakukumbira, edu, musave rengera. Jangatwa kuti muna samarayza, dozo, ngatamika, tikazu, tikaverengerwa, ne shona. Guwa ye, thino vi, thino vina. Saka nduakukumbira, nyalitwe la bava, antu, thelan li samarayza, antu, thina vali bomke. Thelan li samarayza. Then, after samarayza, theti sa, bitan aaba, ipe pare.
Nyabonga. Eh, apancha, zaza mugu samarayza, kani ngani. Eh, Zimbabwe has enough legal instruments to deal with any form of abuse or human rights violations. The NGOs community is opposing the PVO bill with dead hands because they are, I, I tell ya motives, as the PVO bill will hinder their intentions of furthering other nefarious agendas. Kufunduka chati kuata, hunge uyine cha, chaturike. Then, Zimbabwe is an institution, the Arab Institute, which, which monitors eh, the amount of money in circulation. Money. Money that is not monitored, like the, the donor funds.
Honorable, over lies. Put a point of order.
Amen, I say bom.
Isisu, thangati chesi. Thokunga, amnakpadi, sisa pata ora, bana, che, bana, che. Thirukuti, isisu, kana uyine sabmisheni yaku. Diri musabmisheni, umu, kana urukuda kus, saku no. Wa kungo tawara, kana pai ne shawo, no thoda kuetera. Sabmisheni wu, ya na yoka, no kuti shawo, isukwerenga. Kutsan shunza, footi, shanyor bapanu. Kuitira kuti. Thino da wu kuti wa, wa ise funwa za. Palifangopa, kuzo tiva, wa necha. Funwa zenu, azichakwa ni sakupuda. Dozatine geti chi ziwiri la cheti. No kuti muno, tawu ya kuzozwa, funwa zenu, ze muno we, ne momwe. Shojinorewa, desho, kuti kungana kwa mai, cha kuno ra chitza, lo. Kweku ya kuseisa, funwa zenu. Saka, tine geti, kuda, kuti, momwe, ne moma, awa, ne mukana. Saka, thirukuti, kunahonaribo, arkuwere. Ngabachimo unza, sabmisheni yau. No kuti, zozosese, shakapukechwa. Zineka, shata ugo, ne momu, asichak zokoro, aniti. Kutimoma kata ora, ishi. Cho eda, pakola mi, isha kuda, cho eda pakola mi, yo, cho kuda shakari. Thirukuti, isisu, chirega, kutszokorora. No kuti, tineka, ya konyorwa kari. Eh, shino zaso, zokoro, inesimba, asi, ino zanyirira, wu ya, cha da kumurisa, funwa yichwa, ma zita.
Thoda kuputendai. Nanda bona bapa, mosumza, onga ane, no. Doukumbira, ndichi, motenda, bona bapa, doa, dozo, ya pakata. Ayu, thitha, thoda kuti chenda, thoda, eh, tho zozoka, footi. Saka, nduakukumbira, ngatinswa nanee. Yatanga, u, chawu ya kutipana. Lozoko, wenda, tho zokoka, footi, titeese, chise, funwa zenu. Saka, tika pakora, pa, tiri pakata, pa, pa, mukuja, yaua. Ma honaribo, sada, ati da, kana kimi.
Right, Pam Soroy. Eh, inindri kwa, ke bamzi. Ndri, ndro garam, muno mach central. Eh, nyayangwe, ndiye kuti, ndukusapota PVO i. Ne kuskonzero, chokuti. Chika, ukati wa, nawari pamba. Ka jinji, wa no tandari ra kumari. Wa no kunzi, ra mtemo, siri, wu pamba pa. Shaka fana, ana, ne kuti. Ka, unenge usinda wapetikafu, chakakuani. Saka, va chen da kumari. Saka, inin thukweza, kutawura kuti. Eh, nyayekujka, yokubatsiwa. Awitese, wa no funga. Asu, no ita, zukufunga, arukukupan, zukujka. Dozo, wa no to ita. Kana ka kutawura, kutuka baba, koku tikhukumbu, chokutichavo. No to tawura, no kuti, unengo utida kujka, unen zara. Saka, ndrukweza, kutawura kuti, ini. Eh, mtemo, eh, we kuti, muno, afani, shino fano, kuya, so ongororo wa. Kuti, ishi, ajina politics yere. Mu, mukui, batsira, ikoko. Kana kuti, kubatsira chete, no kuti kana utida kubatsira chete. Ajina politics. Kubatsira, kubatsira, kune i politics. Batsira, kana utida kubatsira, kwenzo, zotawurava nu. Jo kuita, shakwa yewe, no kuda koku ti, wa, wa ninge, wa, ne zara. Saka, ndrukusapota, kuti, ngati, savumire, especially, we ma church, va jinjiwatus. Doa, wa no uya ne, ne kutakume, kubatsira, asava ne, ka yide na agenda. To uya shakari, wa mu, eh, wa no uya, va chitawura, so kunge, kutakubatsira, kana.
To uya shakare, vamwe eh, wa no uya, vachitauru, so kunge kuda kubatsira, kanaku ti ku eh kupavano yambiyo. Yokuti, shasurukulewa apa, surukulewa kutisuchasodai, sakai mimi, unofano akudai, ah kueti. Ngati, ivede mtemo, wakakozero kuti, munu kana utida kubatsira, ingo batira kueti, kuso batira ne ma kondishen.
Eni ndukusapota Bill Jacassimba, sen susu sapat. Bill no za akontepilit ma PVOs, sen susu za akontepilit ma PVOs. Nisha kati monitor Jacassimba, kudma zozu fambase, akusina manlon darimara tsangwe amunum sapat a terrorism. Do vani nyaku sapat a banega kontepilit. Chesi piriri, piriri, eh, nisha protege su, tupe benefita ma PVOs. Because maridzozu, zanu monitor, zashike, eripadefana, shida kunogu Pindura. Tikatana savama, two thousand ma PVOs a chuya. Atina chata kabata chatinacho. Asu kanjoma dzayo, dakapunamunomunom, zamane milon ma chi, as atina chatora, duduma dakashida kunu. Sakaku ti biriri ngaru uye, riti pesere sma beneficiaries, maridzore gopanama dona kunzogo, desuke kunongu. Chesi tadu, ndukusapota Billiri, eh, no kaku ti ma, ti complain ma international standards. Amabutajana eh, eh, ameno eh, ft chakchakter. Jodi pesro, kati complain ma international standards, ya ya. Marijiinji, zakuya kunogu, kubatsire sma beneficiaries. Sakatu kuti mtemo uye, kuti biriri ngari passe president or signe, bakato no no gauda.
Thank you, Honore Bo. Eh, I think to my understanding, this bill, I'm supporting it. My name is Margaret Chinyama, I live in Pindura in Erotron. Eh, I'm supporting this bill eh because when it was read, eh, some of the clauses, we may not understand it. Eh, because eh, eh not to understand wa na, ne ma lawyers, nechi nechi. But isusu, sema itirwa, mama mama, mama ma, werengerwa, ta itirwa. I think eh, we don't need to subject or to add, zume zume. But my emphasis is, ma, mm, ma, ma NGOs, when they are entering in Zimbabwe, they should exactly stick to the laws of Zimbabwe. And eh, wa negewa, wa buda wewa, we don't have to hesitate to stop them. So I don't think there's nothing to subject from the bill, let it go like that. Because eh, eh, when Honore Bo was reading, eh, he was even explaining that the bill was eh tabled and it. Eh, eh, dono Honore Bo. We are new in the parliament because we are also studying. We are studying, we are talking opinion, so we study bit by bit. Eh, it was gazetted. And when it was gazetted, there were a panel of people who were giving their views. So we don't need to subject anything when we are here. Just today, we are Honore Bo's, thank you Honore Bo.
Pam Soroy, eh, ba edwate gadi. Eh, indunetko omenashemawiri. Eni indunetko omenashemawiri, ndirimu garu munombindura. Eh, biriri, rakanaka, mm, yeti nyaro, sharakagaziriro. Asi dambutzikorata ita ndele kuti, zazoi itkuamka atiku zivirira dambutzikoranyoru, aziskui endirana. Ne zo, tanga tifungiru otindo zukuda kuziviriro. Ne kuti, Simba, ratukujka kutivanu itzoi ita terrorisma na. Chakunori ipafuti mume mume chete. Aparanga rakamopatsanurua, rikuvanu akasiana siyana. Apatakunori pamonu mume chete, anne Simba rekuvatonga vano ava desi. Kanati chichka senyik, kutivanu ava no kwanza kutipandukira, anit. Chakuva piri Simba iri, toripafuti mume mume chete. Kwakazu, tipandukira iye, ne vemo desava, ne nyik, senyika, tunita si, asubudi shakanaka. So I think the bill rufana kudzokira, rono gaziriswa shakare, ronko tunga itkwe si. Ro zo yakwatiiri, richinyato ita zukuti rimise financial issues, noti ku ita, si sarukita. And sema youth, tukona se kuti Bill iri raka iswa, pacha ita struggle, ye unemployment. And ne kuti ma youth ma gingi are employed ku ma NGOs iwa. Ticha ita ma youth akawanda chapina masri, chaita vti dambutzikorakawanda, red dragon substance abuse. Sakatukononge, iro ro Bill ngarimbodzokira, rombo no gaziriswa, ro zuka kwatiiri ra, refine shakari ma ichabasi.
Nati, eni indronzimaret mapasu re, ndikigara okunoku ma central, ndirukupokana, ne Bill I. Sen ndirukupokana ne Bill I, inisema mudzimai weti dik. Tino raramanewa na vata siyana siyana, tirukumaru. Tirukona tinene dambutzikorata kuri sisa jinji, kuvana vachu kubena. Pana utesho okumi, vanavedu vachinji, tukuto kundika kuvane samusho. Asi ne kuda kuma NGOs mama, akutibatsira, eslechaga etabim, tukona tinene inama, ye vanava katu wandeyi. Vatirukubatsira okutva ende kushko. Ne kuda koku tine zine mari, zirukuanika kuboriga zani ma text, zizukuso ya tibatsiriza, okumi edu munominika. Sakabi Iri ndukona se kunge, richaso nyanyo tsinditira, vanu vakyatu wandeyi, ne kuda kwekuwa makata ita opinge, mashite. Mashite, eh, yu ini dro tukwa se kesai san, zimu garu munomu bindura. Eni ndukupokana ne Bill I, dagatari samu ni kadezi Zimbabwe, dagatasa ma NGOs, ne vanu vachunu ramanavu ma varidisability. Ne vanu ma ridvunalebu, ne vanu manuka monjimbo, dagatasikuma michao, vano rangari. Tukutukupokana, je ne vanaska na, djivivi, tangat, tukuanamkanu kudidizwa, ne ma NGOs. Kutiva na, vano fana kuzo, tukanda bato shibaro, tukofana kutauru, lagatwa shibid. Tukandwa shuro, kutasigandu, ana baba, vano kabato shibaro, ana baba shayu, venu sata ule, nokuti ndibaba. Asiko jojo, vana arukudidizwa, kana kote, zako uchikwa zinyiruwa, zita ule, sakanru kusapota kuti Bill I. Garisa vefo, shichose, kati garu ongororo, nokuti, shalukuitaka, ajinjya so ndre, ne vanu le Zimbabwe, niti tigana nyayemkoma, nokuti ma basa shayu. Ne vanu vajinji, vende ma bas, kose do ma beneficiary, achwa sata bo, sata bo, ma, ma employee. Sakatukona zume zume, sana somina shakanaga, narichingela vanu. Thank you.
From Muchimanda Disability Organization, disatlatauru lakawanda, ndino kumbirau clause six imbowerenwa, nech inurimiro amai. This clause inserts a new section in the Principal Act setting forth the circumstances under which a registered PVO must apply for the amendment of its original particulars of registration, in particular where there has been a material change to those particulars. In some cases of material change, eh, involving a substantial change in its objects or of its proprietary structure, for instance, where the PVO matches with or is taken over by another PVO or other entity. PVO may be required by the registrar to re-register. Murimiro amai, kana NGO, yaita mbanani zwa, kanaku ti yakinja, vanu. But ngati maybe, my last is, gano ma directors, kimegi chisungiruwa, kuti iye ndi, kuna register, kuna register. Enu ne konzi, no da ku register, shikare, sema kinjiru, ayenge yaita.
Eh, tauru kandaita no funga manzo, adatauru nyai, organization, atina tukur ne PVO. Eh, tirukujka maninge, kutisema organizations, arukufoma kumarua. Anenge asati, anne vijinji zayao kuziva, asiku ne ma organizations, ano va kure, kuzoku. Ati uya anne ma agenda savo, asisi ayayaru kufoma munu, ati dokto sapolwa, anne urumendi. Jangan shakana kaku ti, kana mtemo urukubata, ngau bato uchona kuti, tine eh munu akaberekiwa munu, acharamba arimunu, ano da ku sapol. Asati aku kwanza kuana, mari kuva kumiri, sakai iwa yo takayome serama ninge, acharamba ajitasi, ajitambutzik. Ati the end, ano zupeseera avarwa, no funga, panu nyazi di, di, di registration, ndunetwa, kune vanenge vatadza kufuufira. Zirukudiba, ne organization iyo, for instance, kushanda kumarua, kanamu tiri watra. You can go for more than five years, usina isu nuoneka, nokuti unegosi na supporting system. Sakanadru kufungi ziraku ti, urumende kanayada i, inofana kuchisa o shakare, ruoko raiyo, kumapiviosi iwa iyo. Kuzekuti shaka igume yu ya, iyo iso raiyo, mari ayewe ipabo, so that movement, inenge kufambas shakanaka. Kongo roko mari i koko, kuringa kwa kita kuti, munu ese, akibatsira uwa, munisha shakanaka, uye ze, eh, PVO i, inenge sisi na another agenda. Ya we kuswa kuti, iruenda kubatsiravanu. Truly speaking, vamwe vano go uya, kushandi samazita edu, kutivatore mari, vachienda. Isuzu, zovatiko, jugumo fambase, unozonjuka, ista uya, agenda edu nde kuti, mari edu atina yu de training. After five years, na trainwa, na garra, kuti chakayitiko, bakabuda ma milon zufi, of dura. Sakapani kipasi na control, sakanadru kusapota, jangan shakani sikwa urumendi, yasupina monisha shakanaka, you control, thank you.
Notenda, Honore Bo.
Nati, maintanda ndirigara munombindura. Eh, eni ndukusapota Bill I. The reason being, ma NGO, ma jinji, angar kuyamuno. Avanaka na building ya, wakati vaki ra munomachi central, indri born and bred iye. Guru ya panaka zawa, ro ro kuchu eshe, ne ma ndaweni, bindura nde yagaga, akuna kana budi, wani ndakaka, waka ne ma NGO. Asasin kwanu kwa mari shaka, vanda stere, kwanu disa diskusiwa. Mari zema NGO, jinji, vaku sapolta ma political parties, kutiwakena gnesi the government, of which is not good. Tumakaza kunduana, ana kuda, oh, niye ma NGO, because aninga akunduana ne ujo. Achiwachi, nigeru kana uwa, achbanana mari ne ujo. Uyu kuta shakauru ne na, vacha iwa, ande tira wa mume chete. Tumazlo ziva, nache kakura kese. Sakashoma yani jiwo, ano uya nervous, sorry, isna government, no, we don't want, vava uye. Va ite, tudiwa ne urumende yedu, kuti tio ne kuviri rana isusu wa ne vesa Zimbabwe, innika yedu, inoteze. Vapi ne vapi, asima yani jiwa, ngati yere ne, tudiwa, ne nika yedu. Kajinji kacho, vajinji, vasho ama komisa, I think you know what I mean when I say they are komisas. Do wa nenda vachi kambene, kambene na ma opposition, do wa no nigeru kashakari, vaneke varima, ma, ma observers. Vanu vasho, antinga variu akuteta margins, iya aru munu NGO, ah, no, atingali, tindarungu kame. Tukuda kuti titere Bill I, zinyanyu titra shakanaka, tisau no kwenkana, nozo, nato minikama, ne miri zonga, yakonzo kona rivo. Va former ma terrorist, akunetsa, iti ati no kusapota, no, antifungo shukanaka. Eni ndakadira, rema NGO kawanda, dakani kantela kuzi, last eighteen years, daipina ma meetings, na vanda ingoso, alota ura. Sakas this bill, I think will protect everybody, thank you.
Pam Soroy, eh, ba edwate gadi, ndiwe bo parazem, ndikigara munu. Lela uti, tite, dibetra du, titi zwa, chinanga. Nyay, iru konze, kuti, ndukona, tinge tukuta dambutzikoru, kuti, Bill I irigaye. Rukutauruwa pakuti, zirukunzi, ngati varaisi ma NGOs, kanaku zima PVO, avisuko varwa. Nyay, iru konze, uti se mtemo, lokuti, wa tanda kuya kushanda ne so adiba, kwa unengo adiba. Wa uya disha dani, suti ne mtemo edu, atunova, no mititereze. Ziruwa kuti, kana, iyo ongo kuti, kira uti manoka, nushaba basa, acha uya basa, asapu kuta ante kuti, mu, mtemo kushande. PVO ya ju, ikwanso kute zira, mteme rukita ze, nenge tudiwele ni, notenda.
Thank you, eh, donzi, chidejashajakoma.
Mosumuzi, sa Honore Bo, chidejash.
Donzi chidejashajakoma, ndabo ku, ku dombosh. Nyay, ndukusapota, mtemuwa ora shata, paneyeze kuti, panema ma NGOs, right? Angachi fanda ma pharmacist, kutivanende kuma local, kuma mushauku, kuma mshonga. Kutivanu apa mshonga, vana mbya vedu, ne vanu, vanu, vanu turi, pama uchaya zache. But now, bakango bule this eh, PVO, bupasi ruka, iti rukudebate. Ma ngo ma NGOs, the donors, they support, vaka first rate, then vava with draw. Vava with the draw now, ma pharmacist, shakwasi kuyenda i koko, wasa vasisina mariya, tule kuti vachienda. Sakas, sakas, tiri, ifo arukuma musha, avasitombuane, yes, varukuti devanti, kudi, ri sa ribe po, batal squita, rite, Bill I ra rite. Veneza kuti, iwa vasta o ne, medication ayewe every time, even kune wa unu banaya, hongoni ma, ma widow, sankasi sapolka, vache, because sapolka, sompoa medication, hongoni shiru.
Notenda. Yakwenda pana, Honore Bo, blea pana kut Honore Bo tichenda, Honore Bo, smuka mchao, we na tichenda vadi.
Yeah, indronzi, it was mekete.
Mosumuzi, rai, zirenu, Honore Bo.
Donzi, it was mekete, ndino sapat a Bill I. Rakana kapa kutisunsho, asiri control, uya tiskula ba ma NGO, as kutungo kontrola. Sakaraka nakasporu, apana chakasha tapa, apana ju jinga titi sana mtemo, chunche se shoda ma control and check balance. Sakandino rusapota shkuru, atinga vane ku, tutsumo abzoro baru, tukursapota, nditukufara, kujata shakanaka.
Tuya Honore Bo, Honore Bo akava, koya, Honore Bo, koya, Pam Honore Bo.
Eh, Pam Soroy, eni indunetwa sibonyo koswanda.
Honore Bo, mosumuzi, soreni.
Indunetwa sibonyo koswanda, ndirumuyut, we munombindura. Eh, point yangke, yep, tanga, iruva kuti, pa Billa, pakani ronzoniso, ma NGOs, aso kwanise ku associate, ne ma unregistered associates. That is limit, ma fans ano ya, because kune ma kumawe wishers, aninga angouya, ashidaku batira, asiri registered. We can, vano ya, like, ashidaku batira, asiri registered, which means zukuti, kana Bill I chete.
Which means kuti, kana Biro reche, ah, vano kwanise we ozo, batira, kana asiri registered. Ta limit kwa pama we wishers, anga axtaku batira. And then it's affecting, ah, vanu, wangavachi batira, not va rukuisa mutemo. The second point, ndukutawara, de kuti, and the school sapota Biro is, because, ah, vano vakaisa Biro, vano varukumuso elite, those who are already rich. And then they are affecting waru parts who are being helped, ne ma we wishers. So I'm not supporting the bill. I see if they are refining the bill, je kuti vanu uya, votanga, lagara, passing ne varuku batira, to those who are benefiting from the we wishers. First, vasatiwa, isaburo, se iwa ma fungiro awo, se varuku ononge, iwa, they are being threatened. Whilst varuku batira, they are not feeling the same. Se kuti, awa suona kuti, varuku batira, variku, dakuti vanu, waranbe waripo, vachiwa batira. So, kana Biro is, shingera iiswa, ravuwa, which means kuti, varombo, variko, varuku ma remote areas, kuru kwenja shkafu, we can say, se gore, no ya kuna onai. The government, ah, va kwanise kuenda, wa shnova batira kuma misha. We can say, for example, kuma misha wa shnova, we can say example, like, kuna na berengwa, kuli, kuli, kuli. Vanu avana, ino zichi, mari ya kurarama, munguwa, ino ya drought. By the government, pano di shkafu, ngachi uya, there is corruption, kuvakumuso roshka kuzasi. They only benefit vanu ma shoma, so I'm not supporting the bill. Thank you.
Datenda, onarebu, do ya sumuzava? Achi bakapo, onarebu. Do ya, do ya kwenja, napaka tampa.
Right, eh, indojwa, chige de. Ndrimgaro munombindura. Eh, ndukusapota Biro is, eh, nokuda kue kuti, ma ngo majinji, aruku uya muno. Varu, varu fano, anga vachi sap- vachi kontrola, ne government yedu. Trugita challenge, ye ma ngo, aru zupeseera interfere eh mu- ma political parties, edu atina munomzmba. So, root Biro, nda monanda ita, root batira, panya ya, ye, ye varu, kana diye vanu, 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 panya yu kuti, waru, vasa ya, vasa pasa zeda, neyetorismi. Eh, root batira, bureau, then panya yu kuti, mari uye, eh, iti kontrola, ne government, mari au. Nukuti, that's example, shakadar. Why? Eh, ma ngo majinji, mari za o, instead of the, zita risana, ne shawa, za, shawa zwinzi, ramunomzmba. Asu tarsana ne zip, ne jo jo. Enda, wa kusponsor ma political partiesi, eh, wa utokonze, rapu sakatsi, kana munomzmba. So, ndukusapota Biro is, day, rapasa shakadar. Datenda.
Ah, Pam Soray, sachi ga. Indojwa shota makaranga, ndrimgaro, we munombindura. Indojwa shota makaranga, ndrimgaro, we munombindura. Inin ndukusapota Biro is. Nekuda kua kuti, ma NGOs majinji, atino ona. Eh, ah, vasquita, shawa ne kwa, vaba, vachiti, varu vimbi sa uzo titi la muno. Kajinji, uka da kutasaka kumaruwa. Ano uya ma NGOs, wongo tenke la vanu, gana tumadrisi, tumabansi. But you don't benefit ma yarete se, ya kawanda. Saka inin ndukusapota, ma NGOs, ga yendu, vano submita, mari za o ku beni, ku arabi seti. Uya jakari, ndukusapota, kuti, gavacho, ngwe jakari, ne mutemo, we government, kuti, akuna nika isna mutemo. Pa vano bego kune mutemo, tukuda tina gaga itu, ne mutemo inika, diwa wa gazi, datenda.
Right, do ya, onarebu, do ya, do ya, do ya, do ya, do ya.
Inin indojwa, Bernard Manera. Inin indojwa Bernard Manera, this, ndiye munombindura. Inin indi, I'm against this PVO. The reason behind why I'm against this PVO. Chapter four, the constitution, inoti, as my citizen, this Zimbabwe, we've got the right, yeah, association, freedom for association. So, kana isusu tiga rambi dwa, kundo associate, ne ma NGOs, becomes a problem. Secondly, kumi swa, this PVO bill, ino ita kuti, pave ne eshoteji, eh, mari munika medu, since Zimbabwe is a dependent country. Zimbabwe ya gar, ito na mari. Tiri dependent, kune ma ma countries, so, kana ma NGOs, aya, agambuniki, goma reza awo, kuti a participate in our economy. It means, o kuti Zimbabwe, si economy, ino very affected. Thank you.
Eh, inin indojwa, Elliot Chhotya. Ndrimgaro, we munombindura. Ndukusapota Biro is, nokuda kue kuti, ma NGOs, kana achi uya muno, ano faniwa, kuteza, mutemo. Apana pampa, pasina mutemo. Asu wa kaya muno, achinga ita maswa, kema shaki, ndosa, muno ona, ndosa kuti. Vanengo wa ku, konzresa, minyonga, wa kita, ma politics, wa kpino, ma politisi, muno ta achi tombo ona. Imo mtende uya muno, mushito nganiwa muno, eh, ne dumetuma, tume ngo, wa achi tonga, aru, nokuda kupa kutu ma program, temadismai, asu wa achi teda fe politics. Saka tiri kuti, vaniwa, wangwa kontrola, ne government. Ne mari za o, kana di shinga za uya, a di chayita, kubatira, vanu tambuzika, no arombo. Asu vanengo wa kushandi sa ma programzi, yawe politics. Saka nokuda, pani, pani, ndukona pasiri, kunzigi, samu achi ti, vano we do, acha wana ma basa. Eh, vano we du, wa kushaya, wa bereki, we du, wa kusha wa shkafu, andi zo. Tipan, zizizi, twarengaye, shakanaka, zizizi, samu e kuateita. Tiri kuti, shkafu, tira cha, kuna zo, dirifaya, shakanaka awo, wa achi na zo, ku kontrola, wa ma pepe, achi achi one, one, urumende. Ne ma sabu, wa achi ona, ne ma chief. Zizero so fampa shakanaka, saka ndukusapota Biro, datenda.
Inin indojwa, omutauwa, lindan, chiba ku bindura raw. And this could support this bill. Ne kuti one, tagada kuona, nyaya erutauwa, ye kuti, Biro is, richange richi, konzresa terrorismi, munomni. Tagada sa close ya, tagada sa, kafatif ya, March twenty twenty two. Ruta ra, isusu Zimbabwe, tagata obuda, ne chekare, mgre list. Then ikechi two, inoti, ma NGOs, agaru, akasa subscriber, dera arima PVO. Afane kuu, kumani kids, gokuta, bata nega, na ne ma ma, akanga, akasubscriber, se ma trust is. Because vane ma residents, awo, akudokwa, operating as a trust. Saka, achi vanengo ambuniki, gokutiba, anga va joine, va ite PVO. Because iwa vane ma missions, awa, awa no da. Then ikechi, chichi three, ndojwa tawara, ti isusu, says Zimbabwe. Tino operator, shansama US dollars, atina US munomni kame. I see US renouya, ne ma NGOs aya, kana ritingera uya munomni. Ne kuti government yedu, ya gato tawara, ne chekare kuti, susu tufana kuti, vati bisu rechex, of which is usu tino zo, kwanisa o ku benefit, ma shiri, thank you.
Do ya pana onarebu, do ya, do ya. Do ya, do ya, tipe, do ya. Pakapa, onarebu, oh ya, onarebu, ne kepe sa, do ya kwenya, onarebu.
Inin ndojwa u, inin ndojwa u, spewa muneli. Eh, inin do sapota Biro is. Why I didn't know you support, inina was one of the people I even ma organizations, why I am in NGOs. Title badarwa, mari. Ye kuti, ita iso ku government, you do this, do this. Just because you own, kusikanya, so, dutu, ndu fampase, and itika, title shit. But as time goes on, why so not, this is wrong. Shaka fana nama gore, kuma ninety something, pa imbo, nenza, rapapa, tipe wa baorgani wit. Wa ituka zo, fora ma baoga, momi ya masa, kame, kune wa kasa, ona, ma agan. Wa iso, namne shuma pepe. Tine kachiri, mo chine, goko chaka nyurwa, si ma parties, no, shi, 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 shi. Ota za, sa uzo, wa ta, akeni, chi, chi, bitika. Saka inika yedu, or esika, ya garai ne mutemo, wa garau ripo, mutemo ya, ona, bo chinja. Do omutemo rukungo shanda, se mashandla, shungu, tasa, ipapa, se ma isira, wa ita, and it. Iwa ma NGOs, if they are transparent, why are they fearing? Apana chaka, no fana kuchka, because they are clear, pasu shawaruita, shunaka na anything to hide. But just because they have something behind agenda, yawa, and itika, yu da, seta terrorismi, and bribing people, to achieve, patuki the government, and it. That's why varu kura ba this mutemo. Inina is supported hundred percent, why? Because, iwa kana, shinga, te mari, no, no, roda, mari za o, kana, di di, va kunze. They are direct to an individual. As we are direct to an organization through reserve bank, kuti wa go, wa ritsa, tumari, ayewa, iwa one million, i ten million. Igo ya kune muno one, I can use it, so, ndinoda, inin, pasana, nobody, but ita say. But passa even, remember now, batira. Amo so, so, shodhi, mari ya, kuti ku batira iti, kuti, wa, wa, lofre, chiwa, instead of, wa, wa, katiwa, chiwa, chiwa, gore, esee. Saka, eh, supported it, because, ah, unachon, bo kaga, sisi na mutemo. Why iwa, vano, so, kona, pa mutemo, oya nas? Nokuda kua kuti, vano, koso, ita, pa chime, ma campaigns. Why do they not do it pa ma gore, esha, pa pa, sata, chimi la, kuti, pa campaign, my election, na, so she. Vano, so, nokuda kuya, during, pa chime, utu, ne pa, campaign, wa, wa. Saka, eh, supported mutemo, ngawi, te se, shashi. Anenge, kasi, kade, gure, de, sa, no gore, ge. Kune, varu, ma misha, mimem, no, da, kusumu, ki raga. Wa, nde, kuti, murgita, say, government, kana, kendo, na president, da, waranbe. Se ma isira, varu, keta, wa, tifampa, wa, kutu sapota. Saka, eh, supported mutemo, ande, munobunda, kuna president, da, wa, chikise, pa, no, chikika, pasita, ose, vano, ku, pa, e, shablo.
Indojwa, Winston McPhee, ndrimgaro, we munombindura. Ndukusapota Biro is. Eh, ma NGO, ano ya, titi batira yedu, this would change. I see they must declare their mandate, and never deviate from their mandate. But, you know, konzresa, civil unrest, munie. Se shatara na maya, kuno, aniga, ma pamphlet, mu, ginja donate, kuti, jwe, eight year. What is that doing? Jutoka, zira, rift, pakati, bedu. Then, the other thing is, Zimbabwe, iti based on cultural and moral values. Some of them are coming and propagating my western values. Like lobbing homosexual rights. It's not part of our culture. But if an organization like that doesn't declare my intentionality, it's not right. Saka, ina, I'm in favor of the bill. And that bill must go like that, right, Biro. There is an instance, isre, my bindura residents, I was here. Been flooding WhatsApp and every social media platform. Our mayor, Gwathuri, is facing fraud charges. Nekuda kue kuti, akar, akar dive raid, akar dive raid. Akar dive raid, my fans, my fans were meant to drill bows for us people. But, I'm not, I'm just, the politics, but, those people. Everyone knows, everyone in here knows that. Ngade, mari, ayaka declare, he says, nokuda, jutau, wa, ne bill. The masses could have benefited from that project. Thank you.
Do ya, do ya, onarebu. Do ya, do ya, do ya, do ya, do ya, do ya. Uku, nisha, pa, ma onarebu, pa, cha, do ya, cha, cha, do ya, do ya.
Eh, indojwa, cha, ndu, ndu, ma ringa, ndrimgaro, we munombindura. Ndukusapota Biro is, nechko, ndroche kuti, akuna mushausi na mutemo. Kinyangwe pampa, pakai tanzara. Andre, gire, wa, no, anga, achi, nda, kuno, nuonga, kana, kuno, unza, jimwe, jimwe, singa, tende, ru, pampa. Van, do fa na kuzi, kudi, kini chawia, na, chutcha, pa kuti. Saka, ma NGO, ano uya, anfa na kungo declare, shawa inajo, ne kwa, warikuva, ne ginanga, shawa, no, da, ku ita, pa chena, kuru mendi. Vanu, vanu, vauzi, isko, kuti, kune, wa kati, wa, batira, shakati, ma beneficial, o, na, shuneshawa. Wakauya, neji, wandi, wandi. Tine, jingo, vumile, chete, kuti, pampa, pangui, ne, zara, ilipan, wa, no, angu, poda, mti, bu da, kusiku, mti, shi, shi, shakati. Ashini, a, shunaku na. Akuna, urumende, not ende, kuti, munai, te, shanoda. Eh, dofanga, munomu, ati tende, singo cha. Asi, chilko, parita, nokuda kue ma NGO, adu, ramba, ku registrar. Do di, ai, registrar, kuti, inin ruka ya, kuzo, no sapota, rechi, gocha, ni, munomu. Urumende, singa, vumile, ah, vumile. Do, wa, ni, waru, kun, ndinua, ni, waru, kuti, sapota underground, kuti, tivu, di, ri. Ne, shi, singa, tende, vumile, vumile, tikatze, dofanga, ndo, kango.
I explicitly, my name is Mike Nyaguja, I am a resident in Bindura, in Chiapazee. I explicitly support this private voluntary organization bill. The bill clearly states its operations, as it is a bill that has come from the parliament, from the elected MPs who sit there. And this is now the consultation process that is being conducted, conducted. As a resident, I support this bill. Because, eh, the head of state and government of Zimbabwe is an elected president. He won the elections. So, the MPs won the elections, resoundingly. They are therefore enacting the laws. The laws are enacted by the parliament of Zimbabwe. They come here to consult the people who voted there. Therefore, every, eh, 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 non-government organization, or a public, eh, private voluntary organization, is an organization that is coming outside, either from international mutual fund, from a world health organization, from, or any organization outside our country. In our country, we have Visex alenzi, the president of the Republic of Zimbabwe. When he is elected, he is non-partisan, but is representing the Zimbabweans. Everyone is a citizen in Zimbabwe. So, they should come under the government of the Republic of Zimbabwe, and operate constitutionally. We are a constitutionally elected government. We do not go against his side. So, I don't see why people are rejecting eh, this bill. It's a clear bill, it doesn't eh, it doesn't resign. It doesn't resign, or limit the voluntary, private voluntary organizations to operate. But it's only a way of clarification, a way of registration, of way of someone should report to someone, to the registrar. The registrar should report to the head of the state of government for their accountability process. Even a school has got a head, an accountant has to report, teacher has to report. So, it's an articulated, well-articulated bill. I don't why, some say, some have no requirement, some already. It's a bill, they should look at bill, there's a customer view.
Zita, zita, ngayronkwe doondo.
Nusumuzi ra, onarebu, nusumuzi ra.
Zita rango, ndino, ndo, ngayronkwe doondo. Ndukuda, kutawara, ndicheti, inin ndukusapota Biro is. Nechko, ndroche kuti, chaka change, ndo, chaka tanga. Apana, patika sapota eh, ma NGOs, vanoya, vachida, kanga, nisa, inika yedu. Amazedu, munomo Africa. For example, yega, ino, ndiribia, yato, va, trongo, ne nyaya e ngo. Tagati tenda, ende urumende yedu, irukute nde ra ma NGOs, kuti, wa, operate muno. Ngawa kiu uya, vateveze mutemo, inodiwa ne urumende yedu. Ndanzo, mu, ma, chitaura, ne nyaya, ye homosexual. Velu, ikana, chikata, sa, na, munomu, kaga. Munewa, kasa, waka, na, katiwa. Apana, pasi, da, so, bona, akira, udo, ndin, ndotasa, na, no, mu, ru, me, di, shifemeran, na, na, ai. Ngadi, si, ane, i, vaname Zimbabwe. Ne, varukuva, kuma, doke, va, jia, kono, kanga, nisa, inika yedu. Datenda.